Where did I get June the 3rd at?
I decided not to.
I don't even know.
Maybe we could go back to June 3rd?
Yeah, here fall day on June 3rd. But I do appreciate everyone being with us and staying with us tonight. And go ahead and call the meeting order. If Carrie would please lead us in our prayer and pledge allegiance, everyone would say would stand at least.
That is great. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight humbly and safe and dry, thinking about all of the people who have been affected by Hurricane Ida from the Gulf Coast all the way up, people who have experienced flooding and the loss of homes. We pray that you will be with them. We pray for the people in our community who have been affected by COVID-19, who have lost loved ones. We pray especially for the family of Mike Poss, who was one of our city workers who passed away from COVID. We pray, God, that you will comfort that family and those friends and be with our friends in the city as well. We pray your blessing over this meeting tonight, that you will go before this Board of Commissioners, that you will lead and guide this discussion, and that you will help them to make wise decisions on behalf of our community. And we thank you that they are serving as elected officials for us and on our behalf. We pray this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carrie. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners, which takes place on the first Thursday of every month. Popper notice that this meeting was given there, legal orders, and the Dade County Central has been posted in the hallway. This time I do need a roll call. Mr. Lowery?
Here.
Mr. Hartland?
Here.
Goff? Absinthe. Ms. Bradford?
Here.
And Chair is present. Okay. And for those of you that didn't tune in for our work session, Robert, he has had a meeting today and tomorrow. He'll be back tomorrow evening. He's kind of covering for me on that. He is the vice chairman, and so I appreciate him doing that for us. But, okay, we do have a quorum tonight. Mr. Lowery, you want to start?
Well, all I have tonight, all I have tonight is that pretty picture, that plaque. I don't have a, I don't have a report for the 911 call center tonight, so that's all I'll have.
Is it, is it picking Lamar pretty good these?
It is.
Oh, okay. It sounds a little, little distant, but that's, that's good. Mr. Hartland?
We've got fall soccer going on at the sports complex and rec football. I know over the last month, Stacy, if you've been down there, Stacy's been working on the backfield getting it. We've extended one of the fields out to 200 feet. They've about completed that and got it done. They've got it dressed up now, and they're getting ready to work on getting a fence put back up. They're doing their best they can to keep the grass mowed. We've had almost 12 inches of rain since August the 1st. So they're having a hard time mowing down there right now. That's all I have.
All right. Ms. Bradford?
Okay, I've got 325 work orders for road department, and they are down to four to five employees, so they're still short three employees. 512 tons for August. And also, I wanted to talk about 136 going down Lookout Mountain. I have spoke with the road, state road people, and if you haven't noticed, there's some kind of, some signs out there for the, for the two curves. They're evaluating right now how to handle putting more signs up or caution signs or with the first and second curve that are really bad. So they're, they're looking at that. They put some kind of portable signs up there for right now, just to have awareness, but they're going to be looking at that over the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Good report. I want to ask anyone before I give my report, that wants to come up and talk to us tonight. We're going, we moved this up to the, actually number two, and I blinked my eye and skipped it, but if anyone wants to comment on anything that we've actually talked about in our work session, and that, that will keep people from, used to, it was down at the, kind of toward the end of the meeting, it'd keep people from sitting here all night and then being able to actually talk to us, you know. So if anyone wants to come up and talk to us, or you can talk to us about anything, but welcome to.
I got a question.
All right, tell us who you are.
Well, a lot of you already know, for those who don't know, my name's Patrick Hickey. I haven't been to a meeting in a while. One of the things I heard about on the Thursday update meetings that y'all give was the proposed roundabout at the Highway 11.
Who proposed them? What'd you say?
About the roundabout that the state's talking about.
Oh, oh, yeah. The state, yeah, the state's going, yeah.
Yeah. I haven't really heard anything else. I know you said they had to come out and survey it and do some tests or whatever they had to do for that area.
Engineering, yeah.
I was wondering if you had any other news for anybody else or myself.
No, it's something, I just got that about 10 minutes before the meeting tonight, and they will, they'll have public meetings on it, but it's something, it's here, they're, they're going to make a move up here on 299 and US 11, and that's where right now, they're pretty, pretty sure that's where the first one will be in a county.
I mean, we, we already got one in the county too, and it doesn't, half the time it doesn't work very well, just people can't even stay in the lane there. With all the tractor trailer traffic that goes through just that small little area, I don't, they'll be doing a lot of maintenance work on that circle part of the roundabout, because the tractor trailers are going to be going up over it all the time.
Have you been to any of the large ones in Georgia that they built?
I have.
In the last two years, you know?
I have.
Because they're massive, they, they'll take, they take up quite a bit of land, you know, so it's not going to be a small undertaking, but it's, it's, it's amazing. I was at one down in Conyers, Conyers, down in Carrollton, and it's, I mean, man, it's amazing. It's on, it's on the main, the main highway there, you know, 27, and it was working smooth, you know, but they're doing them all over Georgia, you know, and there's a lot of planning goes in them, you know.
I just kind of wonder how they're going to fit that in there, but that'll be a question for the state.
The state, oh, yes, the state.
I just didn't know if you had any updates for anybody or not. Also, I am, he's got some pictures to show. We all know that Hurricane Ida went through and directly hit Louisiana, and some of you know about some of the ties I have with the family down there. They were in the direct path. I think in the next set of pictures that he has up there, that one right there is the exit that I stay off of when I go visit them. But that's kind of like a home away from home for me, and I'm wanting to help out the community down there as much as I can, so myself and the Davis Fire Department are taking up donations that we can send down there. I'll personally be going down there in about a week and a half if there's anybody that wants to donate cases of water, clothing, non-perishable foods that I can take down there to them. We partnered up with a church down there that's going to be helping us out with the distribution of what we're able to take down. I want to, you know, I'd love to fill up one of the large U-Hauls that we could get. That's kind of a tough dream right there for the amount of time that I have to be able to go down there, but I would like to be able to help out a lot of people. So if anybody wants to contact the Davis Fire Department Facebook page, they can get in touch with somebody there, or anybody that knows me, they can get in touch with me, and we can get those items together. I'm going down on the 14th of September, so at the latest, if people can get it, because I have to work up to that date somewhere in the evening time of September 12th, if they can get it to us by then, but.
So just call Davis, the fire department number out there, and they'll, they'll be able to.
Yeah, call the phone number, they have a Facebook page as well, you can contact them there, or anybody that knows anybody up there. If you want to leave items there, you can drop them off there, or just get in touch with me, and I can get it stored to where I can take it down. So, thank you.
Say baby.
That number for Davis Fire Department is 6574141.
That was, everyone could hear that right?
Yes, everybody can hear that. So the telephone number for Davis is 6574141.
Okay, all right, good, all right. All right, thank you, Patrick, that's good. I didn't know you from down there, did you have relatives in that area, you know?
Well, it was, that girl that was killed on the interstate a few years back, I consider those friends family.
Yeah.
And I go down there once a year, I mistake that it has to be for something like this going down there, but, you know, we've had people help us out, especially when the tornadoes came through, so I want to show them a little bit of small town love down there.
Yeah, okay. All right, appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay. I'll go with my update or report. I'll start with the railroads. We've had, I've had a couple conversations about the trains again blocking. I seem like I bring this up every other meeting, but on the north end, we're still having problems again up on Steel Road, right at the Tennessee line. They've assured me they're working on that. Now, they've had, again, they've had issues as far as breaking the trains down in Chattanooga, and they're using that kind of as a parking area. I've also talked to them since we met before last month pertaining to the event that's happening up there next this weekend, and it's going to be, you know, there could be possible, possibility of some major traffic issues on 11, and there could be some issues there on crossing the railroad track if you, if you've not been over there to see where that's at. Lamar and I, we were at a meeting yesterday, Sheriff called here in this room, and it, we had a lot of questions asked, a lot of questions answered. The worry now is, the sheriff, sheriff pretty much had it, you know, underhand, he felt good about it and had it taken care of until not before last, I think it was, and it was a post on there by the group soliciting the Bonnaroo people, you know, which is 90,000, 80, 90,000 people plus that go there. They did, they did cancel that, but there's a lot of people that, who had traveled here from all over the United States up in the, that area up there, in the Murphysboro, in that area, and so trying to solicit them to come to this event, and we're not sure how many that's going to take them up on that, but they did assure us that they're going to, you know, stop at 1500 and people in the farm up there, and once they're in, they have to stay there the three days, or, I mean, they can leave, but once they leave, they can't come back in for that emission at all, so. But what I'm getting at on the railroad, they have assured the event organizer, organizer of us and sheriff's department, they're not going to stop the trains. We know that, that, I mean, they're, but they're going to slow them down. They'll probably slow them down to maybe 15 miles an hour, whatever. They will have a deputy there on the tracks, plus one of their organizers to actually, when the train is coming, they, the railroad would not let them have or use a radio to keep in contact with the engineers of the railroad, security-wise, but they'll just have to go by, by sight and by, by hearing, so they're not going to, they're not going to let that, that be blocked at all. It's going to be hard to do that, but I mean, that's what, that was the safety thing. But the railroad, they, they worked with us and will work with them all they could, but, so we'll just see how it happens. Try to avoid that area if you can this weekend. Start tomorrow, tomorrow evening, they'll start coming in, and what worries us is the 1500, you know, is 1500, I mean, that's 1500 people, but once they're in there, it'll be blocked off, you know, there won't be any more cars, you know, they're not going to allow anybody else in there. So if you've got, you know, seven, 800 cars or whatever, or more than that, that, that come down here and they try to pull in there, Highway 11 could be, you know, really bad. So, and not just Friday, but, you know, Saturday and Sunday too, so just, just try, you know, if you can, you know, try to avoid that area, or if you live there, just, you know, just try to bear with it, because the sheriff has assured us. We had the state trooper, state patrol represented, they're bringing some of their people in, our sheriff's deputy, of course, and then also the drug task force, they're helping with traffic and also enforcing the law. So we'll just, we'll just see how this works out this weekend, but, so just want, want to bring your attention to that.
And they are, they are having to reimburse the county for those law officers.
Oh, yeah, they're paying, it's, it's not, yeah, everyone that's there, over and beyond, they're, they're paying them hourly to, to actually take part in that, so it's not, you know, anything out of our, our pockets, you might say, but still, it's just, what worries me is, is the traffic and in and out over there, if someone actually has a medical emergency, you know, we, it just worries me. The, I attended the, an event back on the 15th, on a Sunday, at Wildwood, it was a special, it was a grand opening, ribbon cutting that they had up there at the new facility they have there at Wildwood. The, they've opened up, they're going to start serving meals, well, they already started, I didn't know that they've started serving meals, lunch, and I think they're going to actually do dinner too, but it's a nice facility there off of 299 that's part of the campus up at the Assembly Avenue, that's campus, and it was, it was, it was a lot of people that came to it. It was a really a nice, a nice building and an asset to Dade County, so it's, it's view up that way. They really welcome people to come in and look at it and look at the facility, and it's right up from the Dollar General, pretty close to it, so try to, try to go by there and just check it out, you know. And if you've never been to the, the grocery store, they've got a store over there, we, I, for the past few years, we buy, you know, not a whole lot, but some stuff there, a lot of fresh stuff, a lot of fresh vegetables and fruit, you know, and a lot of things that you normally wouldn't find in a grocery store. I mean, honestly, so it's, it's worth going in there sometime just to check it out. Really good people, really nice people to deal with. I was going to talk about this 299 runaround, you know, that's something that, that the state is planning, and it's in the planning stages, but that's, I think, going to be their answer to some type of control of traffic up there to keep traffic, you know, moving. We'll see how that turns out. I'm sure in the next, probably by, you know, late fall, they'll start having, you'll, you'll start seeing engineering, engineers up there and flagging and all that, and they, they may, I don't know when their meetings, they'll have a public meeting or two on it, maybe on up in the winter, but, you know, that project here is probably, from the way it looks, it's probably scheduled for late 2022, so it's not something that's happening, you know, next week, but it'll be interesting to see how that turns out. I mentioned our sheriff's meeting yesterday, our paving over here on 136, those people are really, they're going, they're, they're moving on it. The traffic I know is still bad at times. Hopefully, they'll be finished in the next, by the end of this month, hoping, and be done, you know, the grinding and all that. The, also, our paving also is still on schedule with, with Hell's Gap and Burke Alter. That, that's something that's been needed for a long time, especially Hell's Gap. It's going to be probably end of September, October, before they can get to it. We're having to sub that out, at least Hell's Gap anyway, because we are hurting for employees. We've, we really are, and our road department, I mention that every time I talk, we need some CDL drivers and some people that just work, you know, and it pays, it pays really good for Dade County. You've got full benefits, you know, insurance and everything, but as a lot of places are, we're having problems finding them, you know, and so if you know of anyone out there that's a good worker, that does have CDLs, tell them to come talk to us, you know, and we'd, we'd really appreciate it. And I appreciate, I know everyone's gone, I appreciate them doing this job fair. It couldn't come at a better time, and hopefully we'll have a good turnout for that and kind of see just what we've got to offer in jobs, and I think a lot of people are going to be surprised at our pay scale compared to the last job fair we had, because we've had a few, had a few in this room, and it's a lot, a lot, a lot different as far as the pay scale and even the benefits, because who would ever thought, you know, you could go to McDonald's and work, they make $14 an hour, well, actually $15 an hour in South of here toward Atlanta. I saw a sign out, I went to a meeting the other day, and they had a sign posted, you know, starting in $15 an hour, all shifts. So that's pretty, that's pretty good, and so anyway, hope, hope that's a well-attended thing. Y'all got anything else you want to bring up, maybe you thought about before we move on?
Don't forget the depot. You were going to mention the depot.
Oh, the fire, yeah, that's a depot, yeah. I keep thinking about Ansel, been here, but he was at our 3:00. The, we did have a fire down at the depot. We're not sure, it looks like it was set, you know, from the outside. The power marshal was, he finished his investigation up or his preliminary today. We had our insurance adjusters down there today about 12, 12:30, and we'll know more about this, you know, come probably Tuesday or Wednesday, as far as how he feels and how he rules it. It's pretty, you know, you can look out on the outside and, and kind of tell where it actually did start. He did do a test, there was no diesel fuel or anything, any kind of solvent that was poured on the building, and so that's, that's a good thing, but, so hopefully we'll find, we'll have a little bit more to report on that next week, you know. And thank goodness it didn't burn it all the way down, it did get up in the rafters, and there is some structure on the wall, but we'll, we'll let you know more about that. Anything else I forgot now? Thank you very much. Okay. I'm sorry. All right, let's move down to Ms. Marshanna Shaw, her manager of our Dade County Public Library. I'm sorry, Marshanna.
I sent Marshanna home.
See, you've got this mask on, I thought you were Marshanna.
No, you didn't either.
Yeah.
Marshanna needed to go home.
Okay.
She's had a sick husband, and she worked today, and she was supposed to be off, so as the chairman of the library board, I just told her to go home.
Okay.
Her report, she has a lot, bunch of lovely pictures.
Bouncy ring.
This is our September report, on to the next one. This is the month, we do appreciate y'all making the proclamation for Library Card Month and for adult literacy. We are encouraging everyone who doesn't have a card to go get a card, because there are so many advantages to using that library that don't have anything to do with being inside it. Using the electronic venue that we use has 90 magazines. I've stopped having stacks of magazines in my house because I can use that. It's called Libby, and it's, you can sign up for, log in with your card number and do that. Adult literacy, we seem to have plenty of kids that want to read, but our adults have kind of slacked off on that a little bit, and I realize that part of that is work schedules and things like that. I've been addicted to the television for the last year and a half, so thank you for that. They're going, at the signup, they're going to do $25 gift card as an incentive for people to come and sign up. If you already have a card, come by and update your information and move right, and you will also be in the, in there for the gift card. Next slide, please. They're, she's going to do, or they are going to do, a photo challenge, and what their photo challenge, I don't completely get it, but it, because it's kind of a backwards kind of answer to the thing. It's a game, it's to get people to take their library card and have their picture made, a selfie somewhere with their library card, and try not to let people tell, know where you are, and then they're going to have people to guess, and apparently, the one who wins is going to be the one who gets the least votes, because if, if you're dumb enough to go to Cleveland King and take a picture, everybody's going to know where you are, so that is that. I think Marshanna always comes up with fun things to do, or they do at the library. Next slide is books for babies. We, we were lucky enough to get some inexpensive or free children's books, and if you have a baby under the age of school, please come by and pick up a couple of free books. The Dolly Parton group that we were, used to be associated with through Defects has, we are not anymore because they, they have, and we're trying to find some alternative ways of giving books away to children. That was the, that was a good thing. I imagine if we cried and told, told Dolly personally, she'd give it to us, but we hadn't come to that point yet, and that is another organization that I'm not in charge of that's got to do that. Ready to Read is going, if you see, we've got some children there that are already back, and that's Thursday morning at 10:30, please come and bring your children. By the way, if you come to the library and cannot find a parking place, the city has a lovely parking lot beside Lolito's, if you would like to park there and walk across. All right, three activities coming up in the next month.
You know, that's, that's a good, I, I've never mentioned that, and Alex, the many times that he's talked, a lot of people don't realize that parking lot exists.
It's a city park.
And it was bought for public parking for this area here, and, and it was the, right across from World Case Hardware there, and that's a nice lot, you know.
I even know who.
A lot of people don't realize.
That house, the, the house that sat there used to belong to T.H. Big Hole, who had the first store in that old building across the way.
Yeah.
So it burned down, almost everything in Trenton burned down, and this fire this week is an example. Okay, fun, Family Fun Day, 10:30, 10 o'clock to 1:30 on the Saturday, it's free, you don't have to sign up. Come and enjoy the activities. There's a movie, there's some games, there's all kinds of things. The 14th of September, however, you do have to sign up for this one, they're going to teach families, Parent Cafe, they're going to teach families to make a crock pot meal, and you go home with the meal that you make to take, to put in the crock pot at your house, so that, I might go for that, and I'm not a parent. The 28th of September is learn how to back up your photographs, if you are someone who takes a lot of pictures, then, then you probably, and you're not very technologically oriented, you probably need to know how to do this. The next slide is, you all have a map in your, in your, your packets, and I went over and got the original, because we have a new toy at the library. We have a, we have a foundation called Light in the Mountains Foundation, and Light in the Mountains had, got an anonymous donation a few years ago that gave us ability to buy some things for the library that the county nor the library system could afford, and we just purchased a $5,000 scanner that will scan pictures, photos, maps, et cetera, up to 48 inches. So it will turn into, the commissioners have one, here's the size, this was scanned and turned into this. You can, you can use it, all you need to do is bring your item and your, your flash drive so that you can save whatever you scan. Now, here's my historical note for this. This map was done by a lady named Grace, G-R-A-Y-C-E, Grace Freerson, and Grace was in the first class, graduating class of Dade County High School. She did this in 1929, she graduated in 1925. I think it's cool that a girl got to draw this in 1929, and if you get to, if you really get down and look at this map, they had plans to have a serious water system, electricity, and telephone system in 1929, but you know what happened in 1929? So the depression hit, and that was the end of that. Here's the other little detail, I have the original map, it's tissue, and I'm not taking it out of that plastic. I found that folded up behind the air conditioner vent in the upstairs courtroom, and I found two or three maps like that, and they're in the library, so it's, it's, when you're cleaning out an old building, don't just assume something's trash. Thank you for supporting the library and our historic preservation stuff. We do want you to know that the Historical Society had a meeting, I wasn't there, but they, they are making plans to do an activity in October with Park Ranger from the National Park, Jim Ogden, and we hope to do a driving tour to see where the soldiers were when they came through Dade County. 5th of September is the 158th anniversary of the people walking through Dade County. They, they were here for about a week and a half. They, they came in from Fort Payne, Hooker.
Brown Springs, coming down.
They came down Brown Springs, they came in from, through the, through the Coke, the Coke ovens, and some of the things they built to get in here in three or four days is amazing to me, and how they got those horses out of Coke ovens, I'll never know, but, and they stayed here, they weren't here very long, and they didn't know they were going to Chickamauga, because they thought they were going to Rum, Georgia, but that's anniversary is this week, and the park's got all kinds of things going on, so take advantage, it's free. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
You were right, though, they were moving on. They were, their orders, in official records, and I'm not going to go into this, but it was pretty interesting, they were camped over on the other side of Tennessee River for weeks and weeks and weeks. They come out of Telemah, Tennessee, Army of the Cumberland, and when they got their orders, it was to move swiftly, you know, and now they were on the other side of the river, you know, and, and we're talking about these trains that were, you know, some of them had, and were from six to 800 mules, you know, they're, they're not like a little wagon train, and, you know, and it's, it's amazing to me how in the world that they could feed that many, not necessarily, not so much themselves.
Water them, just water them.
Water and feed, and that's why they had all these people coming ahead of them, well, not that many, but scouts, finding places like Brown Springs, you know, and it, and all the official records, they, they, they document, you know, they, they were very good documenting their, their transcripts, and it's amazing to read that, just from the Chickamauga campaign, when they moved through Dade County and went down through Johnson's Creek, went up and went over the mountain, and also, I did find this, and I will, you will, I don't know, shut up for a minute, because I get, get talking about, that group of men, the, the Army of the Cumberland, you know, what do they, they actually... That group of men, the, uh, the, uh, Army of the Cumberland, you know, they actually, uh, had like a seventy-three percent casualty rate. And there was a man that came through here that was going over to the battle over there. Most of them were either killed or mortally, mortally wounded or never dead. And they didn't, so it wiped them out almost, you know.
The ones who weren't wiped out came back here and lived a lot. That's, I've been reading the book on Chattanooga.
Oh, they did.
She recommended.
They did.
They, they started Chattanooga, basically.
After the war.
After the war. Um.
Yeah. Yeah.
Ted and I can get going on this stuff.
Yeah, we need to move on. We got a meeting.
I saw that.
Man, there's a lot of history, right? People don't realize.
But here's, here's the irony of this event that's coming up this weekend. September the fifth, we had forty thousand people in Dade County. Who knows? There might be forty thousand people in Dade County this weekend.
Oh, talking about the event?
Yes. I mean, it, it could happen.
A lot of them are the north too, because a lot of the people.
Absolutely.
Oh, man. All right. Ms., uh, well, we don't have, Ms. Dyers not here tonight with the UGA. And it's on the, uh,
We do have a, we have a video. We have a video that we can show that they sent. Um, so we'll play that in just a second. And I don't think we have anybody from the Alliance for Dade here tonight either.
Okay.
Um, are you ready for that, Alex?
I haven't.
While he's looking that up, could I mention something from the Department of Health? While he's looking up the extension thing?
Yeah.
Um, the Department of Health has asked, uh, that we have patients with them right now. They have two office staff members and one nurse downstairs. And there are a lot more people now trying to get the vaccination because the Pfizer vaccine has been FDA approved. Also booster shots are available for people who are immunocompromised. And they're expecting that boosters will be available to all people by the end of the month. But they'll let us know that for certain. So a lot of people were confused about that because in one of President Biden's speeches last week, he said they would be available by September second. Um, the Department of Health here goes by the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, or the ACIP. That's how they decide when they will put those out. ACIP has not, um, said it's okay for those boosters to happen yet at this point in time for people who are not immunocompromised. If you want to get a vaccination, uh, you can call them at seven oh six, six five seven four two one three. You do have to have an appointment to get that booster. Um, and one other thing they asked us to mention was that Pfizer is also now called Comirnaty, I think is how you pronounce that. It's a, it's a hard word. Um, yes, it's, it, it is. It's, it's based off of COVID and the type of virus that it is. So anyway, um, it does have two names now. So if you call, if your doctor recommends that you have Comirnaty, um, it is the Pfizer vaccine. So just be aware of that. So they did ask us to mention that to you. Are we ready with that, Alex?
We don't tell me it's Pfizer, I ain't taking it.
The extension?
It's on the work.
Okay. Um, the other thing people had been asking about, um, where they can get tested. So where you can get tested currently, um, we have that on our website at dadecounty-ga.gov. Um, but some of the closest ones to us are Primary Healthcare. They can be reached at six five seven seven five seven five Lawson Medical at six five seven thirty-two hundred Price Pharmacy in AFC Lookout Valley. There's also free testing of Colonnade over in Catoosa County on Mondays and Wednesdays from ten AM to seven PM. So the COVID numbers are up. One of the things that we saw earlier today, and County Executive Remley went over in our three o'clock update, is that the numbers are as high now, if not higher than they were in January before we shut things down. And Dade County and our surrounding counties are in the red, just to let you know. Um, some of our numbers this week, Catoosa County went up nearly six hundred cases in one week. Hamilton County went up two thousand cases in one week. Marion County went up nearly five hundred. And Cab County went up nearly five hundred in one week.
Yep.
So these numbers are spiking. So that's why we have gone back to a socially distanced meeting set up and are requesting people to stay socially distanced, um, once they're on county property, sort of at this time. So of course, that is your choice, but we are asking that you, you do that. So I think we are ready to see our video from UGA Extension.
Hi, I'm Dade County UGA Extension four H. We are here to tell you about what we've done in the last month and our upcoming events. We are still hiring. Our job positions have now been opened up on the University of Georgia website. You can see the direct link on the screen. But if you search UGA jobs and UGA extension jobs, you should be able to find where you can, uh, look forward to the open position here at our Dade County office. So I encourage anyone who, um, reads the screen and thinks that these job expectations are something that they would enjoy doing to work with the youth of Dade County, to consider going on the website and applying for this job. This past month, our Dade County four H livestock show team traveled to two different shows. We went to Mulberry, Georgia in mid-August. Many team members had great success here. Uh, most of our team members won their first ever bellwether. This is a huge accomplishment and something that, uh, youth livestock exhibitors work years for. So we're very excited for them. We then turned around and went to Chautauqua , um, last week on August twenty-sixth. And team member, Ms. Ella Hughes, had an awesome night. She won three Champion Market Award and third Champion Market Gold. Again, two huge accomplishments. It took a lot of hard work to get there. This weekend, we will be hosting our State of Dade Wayman Goes Classic. This is our third time hosting this event. It is a youth livestock show for each and every family. And we have had multiple states come in the past and expect that again. So we're very excited for the draw. Um, and folks to come check out Dade County. We like to term it Destination Dade when they come down here, um, and take part in the event. This is a really unique event. We do lots of different contests for these throughout the weekend in addition to the typical livestock show. Uh, so it's been a really fun experience for our office to get to do this type of event. We invite you who haven't, uh, checked it out or know what we do in, in four H to come down to the Ag Center this weekend and just observe and see what these youths are doing. They've put in a lot of hard work and you'll see some of our Dade County there competing as well. Last month, our Dade Dress Class met and we had a state forage specialist, Dr. Lisa Baxter, join us. This coming month in September, on September twenty-seventh, we will have our next meeting for registration. The speaker will also be a state specialist, Dr. Lawton Stewart. He will come from Athens and join us for the evening. And he is a state animal science specialist. He will hear some perspective, uh, that he has from a nutritional background as far as different forages and their impact on livestock performance. The next Tri-State Catolics Association meeting will be held in Walker County. This will be our annual pen heifer show. So that is Tuesday, ninth, September twenty-first. If you want to attend, um, just to watch as, as a member, you can call our office to RSVP for the meal by that Friday before, which is Friday, seventeenth. If you want to participate in the show, producers can. Take a look at this graphic. I know it's got lots of words on it, but you can find it on our Dade County UGA Extension Facebook page, or it can be found on the Tri-State Catolics Association Facebook page. It talks about the different criteria to be met of bringing those heifers down to the Walker County Ag Center to participate in this. The cat should arrive at six PM and the meeting and the show will begin at six thirty PM. The next Tri-State Beekeepers Association will be held at the Ag Center at seven o'clock on Monday, September twentieth. The final details of the speaker and the discussion topics are to be determined in the state teams. And check out our Facebook page for that information. That's all we've got for you tonight. Thank you for taking your time to listen and pay attention to the few events we have coming up. And we look forward to seeing you at some of those soon.
Okay. Y'all got any questions? Wait till next week. You'll find that. That was a good report though. Like, I tell you, they do a good job. They stay busy. They stay, they stay.
Dade County.
All right. Did we have, uh, the Alliance for Dade? I think they're not here, right? Okay. And William Back, he's not here either. Okay. All right. Audrey, you got anything you want to add tonight from the, uh, the fiber, I mean fiber, Bank of Dade? I keep, I keep thinking about telephone. When I see you, I think telephone. Uh, any, any reports, anything going on that we need to know that, uh, you know, we appreciate you being here.
Uh, well, we do have capability, excuse me. We do have capability now to do, uh, almost everything technically that the large banks do. So with people, particularly with COVID going on and that kind of thing, uh, you no longer even have to come by to deposit any checks. We have mobile banking. You can take a picture from your phone and, and deposit, uh, into your accounts with us. Um, you can access your accounts online. Of course, it's super bank safety for the accounts and, uh, all kinds of things like that coming up. Uh, but those newer things that's available in the larger cities, we have all of those now. So, oh, we have some much better interest rates too. If anybody needs some money, just come on down. And, uh, we do have some lower interest rates. Uh, another thing, we will be, and I think I may have announced this, but there's a breeze in the air. So maybe we can think it'll get below ninety-five degrees. Um, the Bank of Dade will be hosting the Christmas parade this year. So everybody be thinking about what kind of, um, float or whatever you'd like. Cause our Dade County Christmas parade is a humdinger of a parade and people come from a lot of places and it's a really good, fun night.
It is.
And we're, uh, coordinating with the Sheriff's Department. There's going to be some things going on in the park and with the library for the lighting and that kind of thing. So it's never too early to start thinking about what you want to build or with any of the groups, churches, whatever. And you can call us at the bank for any kind of details, but.
What's the theme?
Oh, don't ask me that. I forgot. It was last week. No. Um, all I want for Christmas is the theme this year. So.
And the date's going, the date's going to be what, when?
Uh, December fourth. I think that's the first Saturday.
First week, first weekend of December.
That'll give us a little bit of time if we have to have a rain check.
And that's already on our calendar at dadecounty-ga.gov. So it's there.
One other thing, uh, while, while we're talking, um, the Historical Society, we will be putting together our annual calendar this year. And we're hoping to have that done by the end of October. So for anybody that's looking for stocking stuffers or have family that used to live here and live someplace else now, it makes a nice little gift also to put in a little birthday package. And it's going to be Meredith Brock's paintings. And we'll have a little story on there about Meredith as well. She was a local artist. Her family was from here. So, um, kind of keep that. I guess we'll still have them at ten dollars unless we can't get paper or something. We hope to keep the price at ten dollars. So kind of be keeping that in the back of your head if you're looking for a little something, you know, to give to somebody. And we'll hope to have those for sale early November.
Good. Okay. All right. Good report. Um, move down here to, uh, number five, our financial report. Uh, Dawn, if you would present that to us, please.
All right. I'm going to start with, uh, June thirtieth. Uh, once more, we just passed September tw- uh, first, which is our final sixty-day period that we need to get through every year to make sure we've got all the accounts receivable collected and, um, stuff. I'm ringing on the, in there. Anyway, uh, so June thirtieth, you'll see on the right there on the website. We're going to start with that report. Um, revenues year to date, uh, actually, we're going to start with actuals was one million, eighty-six thousand and twenty-two dollars. And we had budgeted one million, five hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred thirty-one dollars. So we were under budget there by four hundred thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. But for the year, year to date, twelve months ending, plus the six-day period to collect all of the outstanding accounts receivable. We have collected fourteen million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. We had budgeted twelve million, six hundred ninety-three thousand. So we were owe, uh, in excess of funds of one million, six hundred five thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars. That's a wonderful situation to be in. Uh, that, as long as your expenses don't outweigh that. And we'll talk about that next, uh, here on the next page. You see the, uh, actual for the month, June thirtieth ending was one million, two hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred seventy-four dollars. We had budgeted.
Five, just getting off.
I think we're getting feedback from two mics. Are they both on?
No.
Okay, try that one. Sorry.
This one, okay, that's on. Uh, one million, five hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars is what we budgeted. And so two hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars is, uh, we were under budget for the month, which was a great situation. For the year, we collected, uh, twelve million, I'm sorry, we expensed twelve million, four hundred sixty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-four dollars. We had budgeted twelve million, uh, six hundred ninety-three thousand. So we were under budget by two hundred thirty thousand, five dollars. Therefore, that's at ninety-eight point one nine percent of the total amount, uh, budget expense out of a hundred percent. And we revenues attained were a hundred and twelve point six five percent. So that is a good thing for what we call the fund balance. And we'll know more about that here in a few days after the, uh, exam, well, I said examiners, that's the old banking term. Um, auditors, CPAs come in and do their, work their magic over the books and take a look at everything. And we'll be producing our financial statement. And we hope to see some growth in our fund balance. Now on to the current, but, um, financial statement as of August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. But the general fund had a balance of one million, three hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred twelve dollars. Uh, general fund investments totaled one million, three hundred two thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars. So it's a total of two million, six hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred six dollars. Federal Asset Fund, US Treasury had a balance of zero. Share Special Fund a balance of six thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars. Uh, hello. Drug Abuse Education Fund, forty-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty dollars. Victim Assistance Fund, one thousand, six hundred fifty-eight dollars. Jail Fund, five thousand, fifty-four dollars. Federal Asset Fund, Department of Justice, zero. Employees Flexible Spending Account was eighteen thousand, eighty-three dollars. And the payroll account had a balance of forty-four thousand, seven hundred seventy-two dollars. Two thousand fifteen SPOLOST, we had a projects account, a balance of forty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty-four dollars. And this SPOLOST, the General Obligation Sales Tax, uh, Debt Services Account had a balance of four hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Then the next page is the current month, or as of July thirty-first income statement. And for that month ending, you'll notice that the month ending and the year to date is the same since it's just thirty days in report here. So the numbers are identical. Uh, revenues brought in was five hundred twenty-six thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars. We'd budgeted five hundred fifteen thousand, three ninety-eight. So we were, uh, in excess of eleven thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars for the month and year to date. Also under expenses for year to date, um, month and year to date, we expensed one million, three hundred four thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars. We budgeted one million, three hundred seventy-five thousand, four hundred dollars. So we're in, under budget, seventy thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars. So budget attained for the month, first month ending, eight point three three percent. Revenues attained were at four point zero one percent. Expenses attained were at nine point nine three percent. Looking at the SPOLOST, you'll see that we collected two hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-seven dollars. That is a little bit less than last month, but, um, or the prior month, but it's still an excellent month. We consider anything above two hundred twenty thousand, uh, in excess of what we, we would have budgeted. So that's really good. And also local option sales tax for the month collected was two hundred six thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars. The next report is the SPOLOST. And then, so as of next month, we will have collected all of the SPOLOST, actually, we've collected all of the SPOLOST as of September thirtieth. I'm sorry, August thirty-first. Uh, for the old SPOLOST, we'll be moving on now to the new SPOLOST. And so for time here, we'll have two reports going forward. But, um, for now, you can take a look at that report. We'll be doing a reallocation recommendation here pretty soon to get everything there at a hundred or less percent and, uh, prepared for the audit. And then the smaller box there at the bottom, you'll see fire departments. Uh, it's not, it says three hundred twenty-seven thousand, five sixty-three is still owed and balanced, but that's not quite right. but that's not quite right. We s-, we've already approved some seventy-plus thousand dollars in expenses that they have not, um, you know, we've not paid out yet as far as invoices. And, uh, Mr. Rodney Ross, the chief, chief chief back there is, uh, I'm not even going to look that way at him tonight, but, uh, they all know that they need to start getting their final SPOLOST expenses in. And, uh, most of the departments still have some balance. Uh, there is one there, North Dade is down to four hundred and thirty-two dollars. And I think West Brow is down to four, one thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars. But outside of that, most of them still have, you know, a little bit of funds there that they can expense. Final report is from the Tax Commissioner's Office. And we see that, uh, the total bout, budget for the year is five million one hundred ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Year, uh, for the month ending was eighty-six thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars in receipts. And, uh, so that's only one point six seven percent of that budget. But, uh, she'll begin collecting taxes. I believe tax bills will probably go out here pretty soon in September. And so to be looking for those in the mail. And I believe the due date on that is November fifteenth, if I'm not mistaken, or something, around fifteenth or twentieth. That concludes the report. Thank you.
All right. Any questions, concerns, corrections? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve our financial report as presented by Dawn Townsend. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. Have a motion, I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. And call a vote. Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Portline?
Yes.
Mr. Mount, Mr. Gallison not here, Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Sheriff votes yes. All right, thank you. All right. Robert, you got any, anything you want to bring forth in legal matters that maybe-
Sheriff, it was nothing matter to worry about.
Okay. All right, okay. Unfinished business, new business. Okay. All right. The, uh, reading of minutes, uh, last month's regular meeting and any special call meetings will not be required since all commissioners have been furnished coffees in advance. Managed public record and available for review in the county commission office. The minutes are, include any consent agenda and will be considered for approval under new business. Uh, I'll ask Mr. Townsend if he would go with a consent agenda and after that I'll entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Townsend?
Okay, we have the approval of the agenda as presented, the approval of the previous meeting minutes, the review of the personnel status report, proclamation, uh, naming National Library Card Sonnet Month for the month of September, proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month of September, proclamation for Adult Education and Family Literacy Week, September nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one, and the appointment of a member to the Water and Sewer Authority for the unexpired term of Mr. H.A. McKeeg, which is this, uh, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, and that is Daniel Glaser. Yeah, uh, Mr. Daniel. And, uh, we have ordinance of second reading, correct, of ordinance oh nine oh two dash twenty-one, amending the alcohol beverage control ordinance. Section six of our county ordinances to regulate ABC permit for sale of pouring and malt beverage and wine, establish private venue license and to repeal conflicting ordinances and other such purposes. Uh, it is the second reading and final reading of that ordinance. Resolution R dash thirty-two dash twenty-one, amending the ABC fees, which is alcohol beverage control, control fees and charge schedule. And also resolution R dash thirty-three dash twenty-one, amending amendment number four to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget as presented.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments or corrections? All right. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by Mr. Townsend. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Okay, Mr. R. Uh, here's a second.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bradford. On call a vote, Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Portline?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Sheriff votes yes. All right. Okay, don't have an executive session that we know of. Anyone else want to comment here? I mean, before we adjourn? You got anything you want to add? I mean, talked about a lot of stuff, covered, and we got a lot done tonight.
Our county executive, Ted Remley, was recognized as a citizen of the quarter by the Optimists Club. Was that correct?
Yeah, that was, that was good.
We want to congratulate him on that.
Yeah.
It was an honor, you know? It was good. It was, uh, it was good. Appreciate that and, and, um, enjoyed the meeting, you know? I don't, uh, I don't attend a lot of the meetings, the Optimists or, uh, during, during lunch. I try to stay here, you know, and, and be here for people, you know, come in during lunch. You wouldn't believe the people that do come in, uh, because they don't have other, you know, time to do other things, you know? During, during lunchtime, you know, when they're off. So, but it was, it was, it was good and I appreciate it a lot, yeah.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
And call a vote. Mr. Lowery?
Yes.
Portline?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Sheriff votes yes. I appreciate everyone being here. Appreciate all my commissioners. Thank you so much. Any other?